This time I'd like to call the meeting to order in accordance with 940 CMR 29 dot 10. Remote participation adopted by the Greater Lowell Technical School Committee April 17th, 2014. Committeeman O'Hare will be participating at tonight's meeting remotely. This time I'd like to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I'd like everyone to do so. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Thank you. And can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Bahu?
Here.
Mr. Tatis?
Here.
Mr. Morin?
Yeah.
Mr. O'Hare?
Here.
Mr. Lemay? Mr. Sheen?
Here.
Mr. Getchia?
Yeah.
Mr. Gigi?
Here.
Is there anybody from the public to speak at tonight's meeting?
No, sir.
Any communications that I'm not aware of? And tonight, we don't have any student represented reports, so we're on to, I need a motion to approve the minutes.
Motion.
Second.
Okay. Can I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Tatis?
Yes.
Mr. Morin?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hare?
George?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Perfect. Mr. Sheen?
Yes.
Mr. Getchia?
Yes.
Mr. Gigi?
Yes. And then we need a report from the treasurer. Can I have a motion to waive the reading?
One more.
Second.
Can I have a motion to approve the expenditures of $7,826,575.29.
Motion.
Second. Can I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Tatis?
Yes.
Mr. Morin?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hare?
George?
Yeah.
Mr. Sheen?
Yes.
Yeah.
Mr. Getchia?
Yes.
Mr. Gigi?
Yes. Any report from the general council today? I don't see anything. At this time, I'd like to turn it over to Superintendent Jill Davis.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The first item on my agenda, I would like to inform the committee about a grant awarded to Greater Lowell for the amount of $90,000 to support the pharmacy and EMT training programs on behalf of the Workforce Skills Cabinet. And those programs will begin this fall. The next item on my agenda is another grant awarded as FAFSA Completion Opportunity Grant in the amount of $10,000. This grant was awarded to increase the completion of the FAFSA and to expand access to post-secondary opportunities. The next item on my agenda is another grant awarded to Greater Lowell Technical High School. It is the Career Vocational Technical Equitable Access Grant of $90,000 for the priority of recruiting English learners. The next item on my agenda is to inform the committee of another grant, the Civics Teaching and Learning Grant of $25,020 to equip students with civic knowledge, skills, and dispositions in order to prepare them to take an active role in our democracy. And the final grant is our WEOLA Title I Youth Services Grant in collaboration with the Mass higher Greater Lowell Workforce Board in the amount of $55,644 to provide services here at Greater Lowell to in-school at-risk youth. And I'd like to take a moment to thank our grant writer Cheryl Boma, as well as the other individuals who she collaborated with to write these grants to help our students. So, thank you, Cheryl, and thank you to the others who collaborated with Cheryl to write a variety of these grants. And then those individuals were teachers and administrators in our school community.
Well done by our team.
Yes.
It's a great job by everybody.
Next, I am asking for the committee's approval for Advanced Manufacturing Instructor, Mr. Brian Cornelia, to attend an out-of-state training in Connecticut. The training is in regards to the Master Cam Advanced Training, and this training is designed to help individuals advance from a level of manually programming and setting up machining to using CNC machining centers to produce more complex tool paths and machining and advanced parts. The training is fully grant-funded, therefore, there is no cost to the district.
Motion to approve.
Second. Can I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Tatis?
Yes.
Mr. Morin?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hare?
George?
Yeah.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Sheen?
Yes.
Mr. Getchia?
Yes.
Mr. Gigi?
The next item on my agenda is I'd like to ask the Assistant Superintendent Principal, Mr. Michael Borden, to join us to provide you with an update on revisions to the Vocational Technical Health and Safety Plan for your approval.
If I want to pull in the back of your packet, this document changes made to the 2023 Vocational Technical Health and Safety Plan. And if you, once you pull it out, if you turn to page 34, you can just follow along. So, this document, these additions were made in consultation with the superintendent, myself, and the technical cluster chairs. Essentially, they are documents to record annually shop equipment hazards in terms of their analysis and management. So, for every item of equipment in the shops, we would use this document so that they can comprehensively go through them to ensure that they're in operational standards as well as safely maintained. So, it starts with just a general identification of the equipment, the date that it's conducted, where it's located, and who's conducting the analysis. And then it goes through a summary of the risks of the equipment, and it goes forward into the personal protective equipment, PPE, that would need to be used for the equipment, the license certifications, if any, that are needed to operate the equipment, as well as who's been trained in terms of safety tests and training material. It goes forward to talk a little bit more about the possibilities of different hazards, such as entanglements, trauma, foot injuries. So, it's really a comprehensive document that we'll be using annually to look through the equipment to ensure that it's operationally safe and maintained properly, and all parties are trained to use it. So, that will be incorporated starting this year, pending your approval. The second document is an overall Chapter 74 Program Facility Evaluation. So, essentially, this document would be used in every shop by instructors in consultation with their cluster chair to go through comprehensively in terms of what's safe and what is need of repair, such as doors, exits, locks, eye wash stations, electrical devices, fire equipment, fire apparatus, personal safety precautions, as well as other items such as lights, heating, things of that nature. So, again, so one's for equipment, one's for the overall facility within the shop. So, these will be used annually. This is helpful because we have safety audits here in the building, and this will be an opportunity for all parties to go through them so that we can get ahead of the game before an audit. Lastly, last spring, I presented to you the Respirator Protection Program, where that's in the last part of the document, that's toward the end. We talked about the need for training for use of respirators. The only addition to this is to include painting and design as well. And that's essentially the changes to this health and safety plan for the bulk tech programs.
Any questions, guys?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Tatis?
Yes.
Mr. Morin?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hare?
Yeah.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Sheen?
Yes.
Mr. Getchia?
Yes.
Mr. Gigi?
Okay, thank you, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on my agenda is I'm looking to discuss an enhanced salary incentive for our junior ROTC program. As you know, we have received approval to start a junior ROTC program. However, we have been having some trouble recruiting officers interested in the program. As a result, I had a conversation with the Colonel in regards to why this could be happening. And the Colonel suggested that sometimes adding incentives to the current minimum instructor pay would be an incentive and entice some more interest in the position. He also added that he's often seen difficulty recruiting officers for positions in the Northeast because of the higher standard of living. So, there are options that we can discuss tonight and then determine if we're interested in increasing or adding an incentive to help recruit positions. So, the options are to extend the contract time over 10 months. Right now, we're interested in a 10-month position. Enhance the salary above the minimum instructor pay, because right now, we're only offering the minimum instructor pay. Or add a stipend to the salary such for a drill team or a color guard, similar to our coaching stipends, which would add to the salary.
So, Jill, is that, part of that salary was granted, right?
So, the military pays half of the salary. However, they will not...
Pick up the half.
They will not pick up the incentive. Any incentive that we choose to select, they will not pick up. They will continue to cover half of the salary, but they will not pick up the cost of the incentive.
So, if we up the salary, will they pick up that other half?
No.
Okay, so they're...
That's considered an incentive, yes. Their contribution is half of the minimum instructor pay.
Okay. Were there any comparisons?
So, yeah, so basically, right now, I kind of looked at, there are, let me see where I have it here, there are one, two, three, four, five, six. There are six opening positions in the Northeast. Only one of the six is filled, and that's at Lowell High School, because they do do incentives. The rest of the programs aren't filled, because they are similar to us, only offering 10-month contracts with no additional incentives.
So, what is Lowell doing for incentives?
So, Lowell for incentives, remember, their program has also been established over the years. So, they are doing a 12-month contract with enhanced salary stipends and bonuses, supplemental benefits, health plan, and city retirement.
So, let me ask you a question. So, they'll still be part of the Greater Lowell retirement system?
No, we do not offer any benefits right now.
Okay.
So, I am proposing to start possibly with a stipend, to start a drill team or a color guard, and to start there with that incentive, which would be similar to a coach's stipend of $5,700 for a color guard and a drill team.
You'd have to see how attractive it might be.
And just to see if we get more interest in the position, starting there with the stipend, because I feel the stipend would benefit our students with establishing a drill team here or a color guard.
There appears to be a need.
Another option is to extend, instead of a 10-month position, you can make it a 10-and-a-half-month position, an 11th-month position, a 12-month position.
What would be the difference if you had a 10-month position?
The salary, you would increase its extra pay, right?
And that is not picked up by...
That is not. Any incentive is not picked up by the military.
Question, and the schools that are participating, the six or seven schools?
Mm-hmm. In Massachusetts.
In Massachusetts, they don't have any incentives in their programs, is that right?
So, right now, the ones that still have vacancies have no incentives. The only other school without a vacancy is Lowell High, as I said, that has incentives.
And generally, who applies for these positions, retired military?
Yes.
Do we have any...
And we aren't really recruiting, they're recruiting and then sending them to us.
Are the student students showing interest in...
Are our students showing interest, yes.
Yes. Do we think we can fill it up the first two years?
Yes.
Do they, do other schools offer like three-year contracts, four?
No. That's not one of the incentives that the military suggested, which is sort of what they promote as incentives. They have a list of incentives.
There's been no interest so far.
There's been, I'd say, we've had this opportunity open for a year and a half, and we've had two interests, and they both declined.
Do we know why they declined? Any follow-up questions?
One, I think it was a location and salary, the relocation from the Midwest to here.
Oh. I would have thought retired would be around here.
Yeah. What's the money difference if we offer them a 12-month? Do we know what that two-month gap is?
No, I didn't look at the two-month gap.
How about 11-month? They may want a month off of the summer.
Right, that's, okay. Yeah, no, I'm just, what's the difference between the 10 and the 11?
I would almost think that if you're retired, 10 months sounds very interesting to me. And what is our starting salary?
So, we, right now, we have slotted $40,000, so 80, we pay 40, they pay 40.
All right, so it's an $80,000 position? And they still collect a pension from the service? It's a nice little job, if, maybe it's not being promoted.
So, basically, it's eight grand a month.
Do you have to be retired military or just a veteran? George? George, you'd be perfect for the job.
It's a good question. If you're not mistaken, I think part of the criteria is rank.
Yep, so a higher rank gets a higher salary. A higher rank gets a higher salary, but we're not getting any ranking interest, right?
Do they have to set the ground rules, any kind of curriculum?
Yeah, oh, yeah, there's a whole program that they're responsible for, yes, yes.
And it's the military that sends the candidates to us, that's the service.
Correct, they send the candidates to us.
So, we can't go out to the legions and some of the, and say we have a position available?
The posting and everything is through the military, yes. And they figure out the salary, they have this configuration based on their ranking and years of service.
Well, we want to get it off the ground as well, Peter.
Yeah, we do, and we'd like to create some more interest in the position. And the Colonel suggested incentives and gave me some options and suggestions for incentive. And I think maybe my proposal will be to start with an incentive similar to a coaching position, where we start a drill team or a color guard and propose that incentive.
And could we jump the salary up by, let's say, $5,000? Just because we've got two applicants and they've both denied?
So, if we, if we want to, sure.
What about the person relocating?
The military takes care of that. No, 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 if they relocate, they are relocating and finding their homes here.
But they're already retired. They're not an active military, correct?
In most cases, yeah.
So, they might be in the region, if they're looking at the position.
Yeah, I think, if I recall, because it was a while ago, I think one was local, but the other two were not. Mike, do you want to, can you refresh my memory?
There was the initial candidate that expressed interest, probably the most serious level of interest out of the two, was from New Hampshire. And we were prepared to offer him the position, but he declined and didn't state a reason. And the second candidate was, I think, had just retired, but I, no, I believe he was going to retire within a certain window of time, so he was active at the time. And I believe he was living in the South, and he didn't express as much keen interest as the previous candidate. And that's, that's pretty much the situation. And we've interviewed every candidate that we've had, we've seen, so...
To qualify, they'd want to relate well with the kids, and they'd have that drive.
Like a girl's side.
Yeah, well, they got to be able to relate and motivate the kids and still, you know, talk to the kids on their level to some extent to keep them interested. To qualify, Mike, what do they need, do we know, do they need 10 years military?
These individuals were 20-plus.
They were.
And they had served.
They had extensive.
They were excellent candidates.
Yeah, they were, they just...
And, you know, we felt that they could do the job well.
Yeah, the first one, we really thought we had.
I think where you may be competing is if they have a 20-year career in the military, and they're ranked, and they have some authority and responsibilities, they might be able to go into the private sector after retiring from the service and probably make a fair amount of money, if they're connected politically. I would agree, they need to be connected politically. Well, even within the service. So, I'm kind of inclined maybe to follow Jill's recommendation, do the stipend, and see if that draws anything, and then maybe I can inquire a little bit further. My brother works for the Department of Defense, and see if we can find a way to recruit differently. I like the stipend idea, but I also like the salary jump idea as well, because if we're not getting any interest, then it might be worth it to jump the salary and have a stipend for them.
So, the stipends would add $11,400. It's two.
Yeah, that's two, so, okay, so it's not combined.
Right, because right now, we're looking to get one individual first to start.
Is it a full-time position?
It's a 10-month position, full-time, yes.
I'll make a motion to support the superintendent's recommendation.
Second. Roll call. Do you want any further discussion?
Want to add?
Please, with research, but not so far, I'm going to try it out.
I think it's a great program, I'd like to see it start.
Yeah, so would we, we're really trying.
We got to have that, the leader. I'm kind of shocked, too.
Maybe not, hopefully, we will.
Yes.
Now, thank you.
Yes.
Mr. O'Hare?
Yeah.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Sheen?
Yes.
Mr. Getchia?
Yes.
So, the final item on my agenda is to talk about the new General Health and Safety Protocols, Practices and Protocols. So, as we all are aware, all schools are required to be in-person full-time, five days per week for the 2021 school year. Remote learning is not an option. It has not been approved as a student learning time by the Department of Elementary Education. So, we know that our students need to be in school five days a week full-time. As a school district, we are committed to providing a school learning environment that is promoting the health and safety of our students and our staff. And we need to continue to do that. I think we were successful doing that last year. We need to continue to work together to promote the health and safety of our school community. We know that as we begin this school year, we are now being faced with many challenges, continuing with COVID-19 and the new variants that are emerging and impacting all of our communities. We know that the current variant is 50% more contagious than the Alpha variant, and we know how important it is to implement all mitigation measures to protect our students and staff. Most recently, the Department of Education and health experts have released some regulations and guidance. The American Academy of Pediatrics, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, the Mass Department of Public Health, the CDC, they continue to evolve regarding mask protocols and responding to COVID-19. And I could talk a little bit about them. So, on July 19th, the American Academy of Pediatrics recommended a layered approach to make schools safe for all students, teachers, and staff. That includes recommending that everyone older than the age of two wear masks regardless of vaccination status. On July 27th, the CDC, or the Center for Disease Control and Prevention, suggested a return to indoor masking, stating that universal indoor masking for all teachers, staff, students, and visitors to schools regardless of their vaccination status. On July 30th, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, along with the Department of Public Health, released new guidance for school districts, strongly recommending that unvaccinated staff in all grades, unvaccinated students in grade seven and above, and unvaccinated visitors wear masks indoors. They also recommended that schools allow vaccinated students to remain unmasked, encourage any individual at higher risk for severe disease from COVID or with a household member who is at high risk to mask regardless of vaccination status. Required federal public health, the federal public health required all students and staff to wear masks on school buses at this time. They require all students to wear masks while in school health offices. In addition, I also had a recent conversation with Joanne Keegan from the Lowell Board of Health. She's the chairperson of the Lowell Board of Health, and she provided a letter, which I think is in your packet, which supports masking. And more recently, some of our sending communities, the Lowell Public Schools, the Draken Public Schools, and the Dunstable Public Schools have all voted to implement mask mandates. Considering the recommendations of these health experts, along with the Department of Education, I am proposing that Greater Lowell Technical High School return to indoor masking for all students, staff, and visitors regardless of their vaccination status, as indicated on page two of the draft of the General Health and Safety Practices and Protocols in your document. We know recently that there has been breakthrough infections in vaccinated individuals with the Delta variant, who now may be contagious and may transmit the virus. So, wearing masks will protect everyone. And if we want to remain in school with uninterrupted time, I think whether vaccinated or unvaccinated, wearing a mask is just an additional mitigation strategy to allow that to occur. So, I'm asking, I'm asking for your support with that. Let me just continue a little bit with the other aspects of the Health and Safety Plan. In addition to the masking, included in this document are other effective mitigation strategies that would also help prevent the spread of COVID-19, which we will continue to implement, checking for symptoms, hand washing and hand sanitizing, or ventilation and HVAC systems, physical distancing when feasible, and proper COVID-19 cleaning procedures. These mitigation strategies, coupled with masking, are the preventative measures that Greater Lowell Technical High School needs to take to be able to protect our students and staff and continue with full in-person learning for the 2122 school year. In addition, we have registered again to be part of the statewide COVID-19 testing program, and will continue to maintain a robust plan for COVID-19 testing and quarantining to include, and these changes are located in your packet, symptomatic testing for students and staff exhibiting COVID-19 symptoms in school, using the Bionex Now Rapid Antigen Test, of course, with consent, test and stay for asymptomatic close contacts who test negative. This is something new. So, if you are asymptomatic close contact, and you are a participant of the program, the Bionex Now program, and you test negative, you can remain in school. There are other, there are other aspects, you can remain in school, and you will need to be swabbed or tested for seven days. and you will need to be swabbed or tested for seven days and continue to test negative. But it's sort of test and stay to keep students in school. That's an additional part of the program. As you remember, last year, we were part of the program where we used Bionex Now for symptomatic, uh, students in school. So Bionex Now can also be used for a test and stay program for close contacts who who test negative. They can remain in school. And lastly, uh, we will continue with pool testing, but they have revised the name for pool testing. It is now called routine COVID safety checks, otherwise known as pool testing, and we will continue with that of this coming school year, uh, with a lab-based follow-up testing. Last year, we implemented the Bionex Now for a follow-up, but, uh, this the state is going to provide lab-based follow-up testing for those schools who would like to participate in that aspect of their testing program. And all this information about the the responding to COVID nineteen health and safety protocols are located on page four through ten i-in that draft. If you have any questions in regard, or I can go through page through page of the proposal, I would I would be more than happy to do that. I do wanna add, uh, that there are some additional changes to to the draft, if you don't mind me talking about them a little bit.
And those are the ones in red?
So so on page one, uh, I will, uh, if you look at the checking for symptoms, I just want to correct, I want to correct the fourth, the fourth bullet, which should read cough or sneeze into a tissue or into your elbow, uh, that there's one correction there. And I also want to add some revisions to page two. Page two should read at the top, mask policy and protocols. Specifically, the mask policy piece is what's underlined in in the first paragraph. And just to add to the policy piece, masks are not required during mass breaks, while eating or drinking, while outside, or when an individual works alone or in a segregated space. Also, uh, I'd like to add to of the bullet that the students' masks should be provided by their family and the staff members will be responsible for bringing ma- their masks, included in the protocol. If something should happen to a student's or a staff's mask during the school day, we do have, uh, supply of masks that will be provided to each teacher in in the classrooms and in, uh, the health offices, that we will be able to provide a student a mask. I also wanted to add a statement that visitors who who do not abide with the policy will be not be allowed to enter into the building. That's also on page two. And then on page nine, just some corrections as, as I said, pool testing was as just a couple of days ago revised to now be called routine COVID safety checks. And we will do be doing a lab-based follow-up testing. That's on page nine. So pool testing has been crossed out and routine COVID safety check is now, uh, now being added. And there also was a correction to how many how many, uh, individuals are involved in a pool. And, uh, the correction is five to ten, not ten to twenty-five. And and basically, just adding that we will no longer be using Bionex Now as a backup for for pool testing. We will be sending a second swab. Uh, the lab will be doing second swab testing for us, which is a really added additional step, uh, that we really believe will allow us to have rapid results. So, uh, we appreciate the state for, uh, having this program and we have been registered to be part of it. So, uh, these are the health and safety protocols that we are proposing for for this school year. I think it's important to recognize that, uh, the protocols are constantly changing. So on page eleven, down in the box, I I want to highlight that, uh, I think it's important because things are so rapidly changing, specifically protocols, that, uh, you give me, uh, the permission to, in consultation with the school committee chair, to update those protocols, uh, as they change. For example,
Give a note.
For example, the the changing of pool testing to rapid to routine COVID to to routine safety checks. I'm sorry. That was something that happened over the last
Couple of days.
Two days, three days. So things like that are are constantly changing. And remember, they're protocols.
Okay, uh, just to kind of look at this as a general, I I think everybody in this room and the team here at Great Lowell wants to ensure and try to protect in-person learning as best that we can. And I know there's great debate throughout the entire state, uh, regarding mask or no mask. And I think we owe it to our constituents to kind of kind of go through maybe the pros and cons of following the recommendations and not following the recommendations, almost like a checklist in our own minds. Um.
So.
I I'm just thinking the advantages and the disadvantages of asking the students to wear a mask and and the personnel.
So I I think I'm looking at from the lens of every mitigation strategy matters, right? Every mitigation strategy matters matters and every, uh, mitigation strategy allows us to be more resilient as a school community and and protects and protects everyone. I think if everyone wears a mask, it also prevents, uh, the idea of, uh, who's vaccinated and who's not. It's everyone is protecting themselves, everyone is protecting others, and we're all working together to protect the school community.
Any input? Curtis?
First off. Very good work, uh, Jill. Um, you know, this, obviously, this is a pandemic. This isn't like a address code issue or anything that easy. Uh, I'm not a doctor, I'm not a scientist, but I believe in science. I believe the people at CDC that do the job, people like Dr. Fauci. You know, these these people have been around for a long time. Uh, we're school committee people. We're here to educate people. Uh, take care of the children while they're here. Make sure we have everything available to them to learn to their fullest, whatever. They take care at a vocational school. And, you know, hopefully the parents have peace of mind that we're doing a good job. And the several years that I've been here, I haven't had too many calls that we haven't. And to recent, even recently with this pandemic. Um, I think we just go with the flow as it as it as it comes because no one has the answers uh, on a daily basis till all these things come together and they and and people such as the CDC and that come up with the, uh, the data necessary to make a determination on, uh, different factors. Um.
I I think it's important to realize as well that there has been breakthrough with vaccinated individuals. So vaccinated individuals could become contagious and.
Potential carrier?
Be potential carriers.
And we've had money available. We've taken a lot of precautionary measures here, uh.
So we, so again, it's all mitigation measures to working together to protect everyone.
Absolutely.
And we know that masking is a proven effective mitigation.
I I I believe so.
Is there any downside to requiring a mask? Pushback by parents or any or the employees? Is there a downside that has been brought to anyone's attention?
I've had over about eleven, twelve emails and messages and I haven't, I haven't had one that wants to wear a mask.
That wants to wear a mask?
That wants to wear a mask. And I I'll tell you, I I I have six or seven checkpoints here and I guess the thing that reaches me the most is Desi, how spineless. Uh, they're not even in, they're not even in their own building. They're they were there twice a week, maybe once a week, but yet they don't, you know, they wanna make a recommendation of wearing a mask, but they don't wanna mandate it. They'll mandate us to do MCAS. They'll mandate us to change our admission policy. Um, I guess I got, I got, I got a lot of questions because a couple of years ago, we had a walkthrough and Desi didn't like the way we disciplined. A kid turns around and says, no, I don't wanna wear a mask. He's eighteen years old. He's an adult. Uh, we can argue this point all we want, but we sent him home. Is Desi gonna heavy hand us about discipline? I think.
Well, as a student, I think, and I'm just playing devil's advocate, as a student, he has to follow our rules and recommendations where he's asked to leave and he, whether he's an adult or not.
Fully, I fully agree with that, but let me keep on pounding Desi a little bit. So last year, if people weren't comfortable being here because of COVID, why aren't we given the same opportunity? They can mandate no remote. Why aren't they given the same opportunity? If I don't want to wear a mask in school, I shouldn't. I can do remote. They're hypocrites. It's just pathetic that they've, they just, they're doing to cover my bottom routine. And I agree with Curtis. We're we're here for the kids, but I'm not here to, I'm here to make sure they're educated. Desi's, this is Desi's job to mandate. You know, like the CDC saying you're mandated to wear a mask on a bus. They're recommending and they're mandating in the nurse's office. But they're not mandating to wear it in school.
So the mandates for the bosses are federal?
That's that's what I'm getting at. They can mandate that, but they can't mandate the school. They're they're mandating you wear a mask in the nurse's office, but they're not mandating you have to wear a mask in school. I I I'm not comfortable.
Recommending it.
They were highly recommending it, right? And so is Desi mandated. It shouldn't be down to this level. Like Curtis said, I agree with you. I'm not a doctor.
Yeah.
And you know what? I'm not comfortable making, uh, at my real job, I make choices for other people by contract. I'm not comfortable telling a parent whose kid's vaccinated, you gotta wear a mask if he doesn't wanna wear a mask. They they got vaccinated.
What about the fact that that there's breakthrough with with vaccinated individuals?
Understand that.
And a vaccinated individual could be a carrier.
I understand that. I understand that, but that's not, that's up to Desi in the CDC. That's not up to Lee Gitcher, it's the school committee member. And and I I understand that. I'm probably, I know I'm in the minority and I'm okay with that. I mean, I'm kind of laughing at the first one. Let's cough or sneeze into a tissue or elbow. Come on, with the kids aren't gonna cough or sneeze in a tissue or elbow. I mean, we can go through this. I'm just not comfortable with, all right, another thing I wrote down. Uh, School X comes in here and plays, uh, indoor volleyball. MIA hasn't taken a stand either. Another another fraud. Who forfeits the game if School X says, I'm not playing volleyball against our team because I have to wear a mask? On the flip side, we go to another school that doesn't mandate mask, use Kingston because they just said no.
So.
We, our kids don't wanna wear a mask.
Prioritizes, right?
Mm hmm.
Right, so our kids, we're saying, wear a mask. Say we take that vote tonight, we're mandating a mask. They go play Kingston. Our kids say to Coach, uh, X, I don't wanna wear a mask. The school says, I don't have to wear a mask. We're requiring it. We're also allowing kids to cop who in there that aren't gonna wear masks. And and I just have a huge problem, and this is just me, and I'm I'm gonna start.
Carpool, but then when they enter the building, they're gonna be asked to put on a mask.
Exactly, so they're gonna.
It's the same thing of kids on a bus, so they have the mask on on the bus, they're gonna take it off to come into the building?
Some kids might take it off when they get off the bus to walk into the building and then put it off.
It says outdoor spaces, I think you can't have a mask off.
Right, you're gonna, we still don't.
But I'm saying now the ma- it's a federal mandate that they wear a mask on the bus.
But when they exit the bus, Jill.
Yes.
To come into our building.
They can take it off.
I mean, Jill, don't get me wrong, this is not towards you. I respect your decision.
This is a lot of work.
I just.
Right, no, I respect your decision.
I'm looking at trying to keep kids in school. I'm looking at trying to protect the health and safety of the school community and and remain in school. And the research is saying that mitigation measures matter. And implement, the more implementation of mitigation me- measures, the safer and preventative you are, right? So this is a preventative measure?
I understand that. And the research shows it, and they should be mandating it, not us. Okay, they should, they they it should be stop cover my butt time and mandate it. I'm just not.
I mean, I think that's the difficult situation that is local, local municipalities that that we're in right now, is we have to make a decision, right? And we're looking at our community data. Our community data is increasing. The 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 COVID rates across the state are increasing.
So I guess my last question will be, are we gonna visit this every month? Are we just gonna say, okay, is there an end date here? Because I.
As needed, I would assume.
Is that last paragraph, I think, covers that, um, if things change sufficiently, I guess the recommendations can be adopted or followed through communication with the superintendent and the chair. And if the committee wants to be involved with, I'm not opposed to that either. But I I just think that you have a lot of individuals circulating in the community and it's probably a split fifty fifty on who wants to wear a mask and who doesn't, who's vaccinated, who's not. So there's a lot of opportunity for that virus to kind of spread within the community if we can control the environment here at the school to the best of our abilities. And it's interesting to note that I heard the superintendent suggest or state Drake has adopted a mask policy. Lowell's adapted a mask policy. Dunstables and Groton have, uh, adopted the mask policy. I did not hear Tingsborough though.
Yep, Tingsborough has not gone to to their committee yet.
North Westford?
Well, no, but our sending communities, they've all adopted except Tingsborough. Um, which is kind of interesting to note that they're considering this region or the acceptability of the mitigation, um, more prevalent. And if we can keep the kids in school, that's our primary goal here, because if they're out, it's gonna be like last year and it's a challenge to keep their attention and teach them the skills of a vocational school.
It's a goal and a responsibility, right?
And it's our, and they're putting it on us. And I and I hear Lee saying, you know, this is ridiculous. You know, but we're the, we're the defense. We're the committee here. We have the opportunity to protect the kids and this and the teachers. And I think we have enough flexibility here that if things change on a rapid basis, we can adopt and and move forward, um, in a timely manner. And I think as long as we have that, then the recommendations that are being suggested may be in the best interest of the community and our school.
I think that just from my own personal view, again, I respect everybody's views. I appreciate uh, our administration here in the building, Joe and Mike, and just, I mean, last year was horrible. Nobody ever, you know, this shouldn't happen in this country. It just shouldn't. Which is an absolute shame that it did, but it's besides the point. Um, you know, I'm at the point now, and I understand, uh, the chairman's point that the surrounding, uh, communities have said, nor at least most of them, I believe Tingsborough pushed theirs off. But for me personally, I I've been thinking about this for the last two weeks and it's not my place to tell a staff member or the child of a parent what they have to do. It's just not. And again, I respect everybody's opinions. Uh, but like I'm seriously, I've dug deep on this one for the last two weeks. And the governor should be telling us, listen, everybody should be wearing masks. Or I agree with Lee's, uh, um, about Desi and about the MIA. They just, they're kowtowing on us. They should just come out and say, you know what, your school district, you're gonna do X, Y, and Z. You know, it's an absolute shame that they have to dump all this stuff on us. And again, I just, like I said, I'm gonna say no. You know, I s- I I get it, but it shouldn't be, it shouldn't come from us. Like, I shouldn't be telling our kids, uh, you know, the the parents, you gotta put your, you know, you gotta do X, Y, and Z with your child.
Can I ask Mr. Sheen, are you referring to vaccinated or unvaccinated?
Masks.
But you're saying you you don't have a right to.
I don't, I don't feel.
Whether vaccinated or unvaccinated.
I don't think it's, I shouldn't be telling somebody how to raise their child, whether they get vaccinated, get a mask or anything like that.
Yeah, but essentially, I find it interesting. I find it interesting. They can tell you that you need your polio vaccination, your smallpox vaccination before you come to school, yet they can't tell you you need a vaccination for COVID.
This stuff changes every day. I mean, the word, it's almost like the media is like fear mongering with these people, which which results, it gets kicked down to a lower level. I mean, it's just absolutely disgusting. That's what it is. Um.
But in fact, it's been kicked down to our. But in fact, it's been kicked down to our level.
Right, it has.
We gotta make a decision.
And again, like I said, I respect everybody's opinion at this stage. I respect, like, it's unfortunate that the incident that happened in Drake it where. I mean, people were almost trying to jump over tables at the school committee members. That's just, they're adults. We're all adults here. If you can't respect my opinion, shame on you.
Right.
You know, it's just, it's got to that point where it's literally like us against them or like the Hatfields and McCoys. Wearing a mask, getting vaccinated, it's apps, this world has gone crazy, has it has, and it's an absolute shame.
Well, you can also look at it, that, the, what you may be trying to do is incentivize those that are unvaccinated. Say, hey, if you don't, if you get the vaccination, you don't have to wear a mask. It's like a reward. But you're always gonna have that population and is not going to do it just because that's their belief and so forth. If we take some of the states like Florida and Louisiana and some of the ones that are really having rampant outbreaks. They have a high unvaccinated rate and they're more prone to a problem. If you're vaccinated, it sounds like it's a relatively. Minor flu-like symptoms. You're not gonna die from it and you're probably not gonna go to the hospital. So they're getting it to where it's probably gonna be safe. It's gonna be like a, a cold. But we're not quite there yet and to kind of ensure the safety of the, the team and the students. I think the recommendations and the hard work, I think Jill's stayed on top of this along with Mike. Um, cause I'm sure it's changing on a daily basis and. I can respect everybody's opinion here and if anybody really knows my deep dark secrets. I have my issues too with a lot of things, but let's keep the kids in school. I think if we can add one more layer to kind of ensure that, that's probably our best thing. Fred, you wanna say something?
Yeah, um, yes, keeping the kids in school. I mean, last year we sat here at this table. And we discussed getting the kids in school and it was priority of ours for months and months and months and finally we were allowed to have the kids back in school. And um, um, we've learned that at home, learning doesn't really work. It was sort of a testing period and everybody was sort of in the classroom, watching it on a computer screen and it just didn't seem to work well. So keeping the school open is priority one. Secondly. I read and you know, the, some of the uh information that our superintendent gave to us, that Lowell does have a. Close to a ten percent less vaccination rate than the state of Massachusetts. So if the state is roughly, roughly at seventy, we're roughly at sixty and Lowell, most of our kids come from Lowell. Um, I understand that we really want to put a, put a lid on this. I also don't wanna tell parents what to do like Matt said over there and. Um, however, I think I wanna look this, look at this thing from the teaching part out, okay? And where I am with this is that we have twenty-four kids in a classroom and we have a teacher. And maybe a, a para inside the classroom. Well, I know the teacher needs to go ahead and orate what he is trying to share with the students. And I know if the teacher has a mask on, that you know, he's going to have a hard time being heard. Because he has the mask on and children may not be able to hear so well. Uh, because of the muzzle on the teacher's face. So I, the mask, I called it a muzzle by mistake, but yes, the mask on the teacher's face. And I really believe if you want effective learning and you know, Mr. Moran, I'm looking at you because firstly. You have a very low voice unless you're, get upset with me, which is common, however, however.
I've, I've experienced that voice.
Yes, yeah, right. But, but realistically, when he's teaching in the classroom. He has to sort of be monotonic and speak at the same level. So when we are putting a mask on the teacher. And he's, he or she are, who are doing for the most part, most of the speaking. The students are learning and writing and maybe raising a hand. Not all the students are speaking at once. But the student, I'm sorry, but the teacher is constantly trying to teach and open the page and discuss curriculum and discuss. Everything needed. So I think everybody understands where I'm going here. Safety first, keep the students. Safe. They're all gonna be within each other. They're gonna, you know, fool around and take their mask off at times and get caught and. Have to put it back on their face and so on and so forth. But when we're in the classroom. I believe that if teachers have been vaccinated and they prove that they've been vaccinated and many workplaces are doing that. If you're vaccinated, you do not have to keep your mask on. Uh, but if you're not, we're choosing you to keep your mask on in this building. So I think we should have the option to allow the teachers, if they are vaccinated or if they want to be vaccinated. To be able to teach without a mask if they're comfortable doing it. So that we can be most effective teaching our children so they're not, not hearing a lot. Not paying atten- you know, and sort of the, the, the teacher is not being masked. Who's having a hard time orating and teaching and communicating and answering and. Trying to contain the classroom and so on and so forth.
So I think I'm just looking to be more equitable across, across the board and have an equitable policy for teachers and students.
And I understand that, but I also know, you know, we're all having a conversation here.
Reflect on last year, at the end of the last school year, we're sort of moving back to that. But when we came back to school at the end of last year, we wore, we wore masks and kids were in school and teachers were in school. And teaching and learning did occur and I can reflect on speaking with students that they were very, very happy. Just to be here in the building.
Sure.
Point was, was well taken.
And I understand that, but I will say this, could we maybe? Check the teacher's vaccination cards for the first month, see if that is effective. Have them come in with, the teachers come in without a face mask, teach in the classroom. They're not gonna be walking around the building without a face mask. If, you know, you're walking through the masses, you need a face mask on. But when you're in the classroom, just like it says, if you're working here in the uh.
I didn't know that we wanted to get into collecting vaccination cards. Cause I think being proactive and wearing a mask. It is protective, like we're being protective. I'm protecting myself, I'm protecting others. We're protecting our school community. We're, we're wearing masks.
Right, and we're not trying to collect vaccination cards of all the people that come into the building. I'm just saying of the teachers, we only have to do it here once. Were you vaccinated? Were you not vaccinated? On this phone of mine, I have a picture of my vaccination.
So, so then, so then that, I, I think that creates some sort of a division now within the building. I'm vaccinated, I'm not, and everybody will know who's vaccinated and who's not.
People choose, some people choose to, um, even though they're vaccinated, to put a face mask on. Some people will go ahead and do that.
And I just think it's an added safety precaution at this time with the new variant. With many unknowns, with breakthrough cases of vaccinated people being contagious and, and possibly transporting the virus. Transmitting the virus to others.
Sure.
I, I think your point was well taken because I, I have a hearing loss, alright? And I need to look at people. And I hear much better if I, and Paul's a classic example, cause he does have a low voice. But what you have demonstrated is that vaccinated teacher is potentially a carrier. Omitting that virus into the environment in that classroom. Uh, and the vaccination protects the individual, the person that got vaccinated, doesn't really protect at this point. The people around them based on the medical findings, maybe.
For the most part, the teacher, for the most part, the teacher is at least three feet away from the student. But, but more so as much as twelve feet away from the student. They're in the front of a classroom and the students are back.
You might be able to meet your requirement with just like a plexiglass shield in front of the desk maybe.
So we have.
We might have an ability to do that.
We do have.
Yeah, well, they're moving around.
Mike, did you wanna say something?
Well, I must say, first of all, I'm very proud of all my committee members here. Everybody's come up with great. Theories on this. Being hard up there in myself, I agree with what you're saying. And all that being said, and I have no faith in the CDC or policy, but. That being said, I think the main thing is to get the kids back in school. And it, it, we're gonna do it and we're not gonna make a hundred percent people, of the people happy. So if this is what it takes to get back into school and I, I don't like masks, right? Whatever we have to do and if things move along and we're going well, we can. Back off on some of these things or we may have to increase things, but let's get.
I think what we're saying at this, at this time to get students back in school. Because of the new variant, because of the data in our communities, I think. Wearing a mask is just an added mitigation measure that uh. And a preventative measure.
Hey Matt, what about, how many students are vaccinated?
Well, based on masks, sixty percent, probably.
Well, a lot of the students may not be vaccinated.
Because of their age.
Twelve, yeah, well, twelve and up started getting vaccinated.
Yeah.
Right? Well, they started in, I don't know, Memorial Day weekend, if you will, right before Memorial Day. That's when the governor opened it up to twelve and above.
Well, I'm kinda curious too, that the mask is not a surgical mask. It's a, a mask which the virus probably can penetrate. But it's just a layer of protection. The protocols that were initiated in twenty twenty. Had all the distancing and all that. Now we're bringing it back together again, so. How effective is it going to be? I don't know, but it's one layer that we can put in place that. You know, to try and ensure the safety.
We're maximizing distancing. The, the distancing requirements have been lifted, right? And we're maximizing distancing and social distancing when feasible. And we know to get students back in this building, that, that the distancing won't always be. Able to occur. So the mask is a protective measure.
Even in the cafeteria, lunch and that, we can kind of maintain the distances.
No, what I'm saying is the distant, there's no distancing constraints right now, the recommendations. So if we're trying to get all the students back in this building, we, we cannot, we cannot. Do six feet of distancing at all times. There's sometimes that we can't even do three feet of distancing. So adding the mask is a protective measure.
Mike, do you have anything you'd like to?
I was just gonna add, it's a thoughtful discussion that we're all having and it's a very difficult decision to, to make, but. One thing the superintendent mentioned in her introduction is. Um, part of what this does is it prevents the speculation of who's vaccinated, who's not vaccinated. And I think that will mitigate potentially a lot of um rumor, social media. Um, as well as if, you know, teachers were given the option to, to wear a mask or not based on their vaccination status, which is an interesting proposal. There are many students in the class and many parents that may not feel comfortable being in that class. And unfortunately, because we're a technical school and because we have such a, a limited schedule. I would foresee some parents and students probably um may raise concerns about that. And may raise um a desire to be taken out of the class or taken out of that particular section or taken out of that. Particular shop or what have you. And that could create a lot of potential issues and problems that we wouldn't be able to solve. Just something to consider.
Sure, I understand.
Thank you, very good point.
And I understand that, but that's, that's based on speculation. And I think what I'm recommending here is try it for maybe a month and see. Based on what your speculation is, based on parents, based on a lot, trying to really effectively teach kids in the classroom. Without a face mask on. It's gonna be very frustrating to the teachers as well, very frustrating. Well, the students who might not be able to hear well, and I always had a hearing issue as well, but that's another story. Is, is a trial basis, you know, and, and see what happens and revisit it in a month. But realistically, Mr. Moran, I'd like to hear it from your perspective. How would you feel if you were teaching in a classroom and you had a mask on throughout all of your classes? Do you feel like you'd be effective? Do you feel like your two, your students would hear you well?
I, I think it depends. I mean, if you wear a cloth mask or if you wear, you know, those throwaway masks like we all have. It's uh, is different, but I also, like I said, just for instance, if you're in culinary. You know, and I'm trying to teach you knife skills, I'm not across the table from you. I mean, you're standing right next to me, you know what I'm saying?
Sure.
So, but I mean, it's. I don't want anybody to get sick here. That's the whole thing. I wouldn't wanna say, uh, I'm, I'm not happy about wearing masks either. Uh, recent, just recently, it's this week, uh, uh, my niece and nephew, uh. Great nieces and nephew from Maryland, age ten and five, have no problem wearing masks. One goes to daycare, one goes to, you know, fifth grade or whatever and they just wear masks.
Sure.
For protection, but I mean, I can understand what you're saying and I know for me and I know it happens to me a lot. Either my voice is a, a baritone as it is and then it happens to me and. Speaking in general, wherever I am, that people can't hear me, so then I raise my voice and then I'm falling, I guess, you know? And it also happens with my other half, cause she's deaf, so we're out to dinner. That guy's falling at his wife, you know what I'm saying? But it's a, it, it, yeah, it, it. It's a fifty fifty, uh, mo- mostly for me. You know, I don't like to wear masks either, but I want the kids to be safe.
Sure, as I do. We got twenty-two hundred kids in the building. And those are the ones that interact most, not necessarily.
And we're gonna have adults in the building too, you know.
Yeah, we, we come close to twenty-seven, twenty-eight hundred.
Hundred eighty teachers.
People in the, in the building.
And staff and, and everybody else.
A lot of people.
And I've, I've already heard, you know, feedback from employees here that. Not thrilled about going back to masks, but I mean, you know, it's uh, I think for the safety part of it, I.
Well, to me, it's not about the employees. It's really about the teaching. The effectiveness of your teaching and how you're going to.
We could sit here right now and turn this down and say, no, we don't wanna do this. And next week, the governor comes out and says, you're wearing masks.
That's correct.
But I think, uh. Like I said, I, I think for safety reasons, I guess you should wear a mask.
We could also put a parameter maybe in there that if the incident rate hits a certain number. Or drops to a certain number, mask can be removed. We can actually put some parameters in there. Or if it hits a number, you mandate that the mask has to be doubled up. I, you can put parameters.
Maybe, I, I think the parameter, I, I think reevaluating, reevaluating on a monthly basis. Reevaluating on a monthly basis based on, on fact, the health factors in the community.
We can make it a standard, standard item at each meeting that we will address the health and safety of the. The, the student body and the, the team, so that everybody gets to participate.
Kind of, George, I think I'll get off, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
I, I kinda wanna. Do this every month because if we're gonna mandate masks and I'm gonna tell you, I'm, I'm. Jill, I respect everything. If not, yeah, I know you worked hard. I'm, I'm not with it. I'm just, I'm not voting yes for this and uh.
So can I just ask, what would you recommend then? So you're saying no masks, so what is the protective mechanism that you're recommending?
It's optional.
So based on optional for.
So if you're vaccinated, you don't wanna wear a mask, don't. If you're unvaccinated, wear a mask.
So how are we, how are we, how are we monitoring that?
That's on the parent to do the right thing. I'm not, that's on the parent to do the right thing. I don't tell a parent.
On the parent really, because the kid's getting off the school bus.
Fred, let me ask you a question.
I tell my kid, wear your face mask, but at the end of the day, when my kid goes to school, the kid's gonna do what the kid wants to do. He's gonna wear a mask today, he's gonna take a picture with his buddy.
So just as, so just as, can I just interrupt? Just as you two arguing right now, I don't wanna have this argument in a classroom every day. When, when, who's wearing a mask, who's not wearing a mask? Are you vaccinated? Are you not vaccinated? Well, you're not vaccinated. You should be wearing a mask and that is what's gonna happen. And that's why I think a universal wearing of a mask, so there's, everybody is the same. And there's no questioning and no fighting in, until, and, and we can look at it monthly, right? It is the best protective mechanism for the school community.
If I'm not mistaken, it's up to us and all school committees are going through this now, so some schools. Will probably not require masks.
So what, I think we just, we talked about the schools and our, our sending communities. Drake it right now, Dunstable. And uh, why am I having, and Tingsborough has not made a decision. Drake it, Dunstable and Lowell have made the decision already.
Right, but even other.
The majority of our students come from the city of Lowell. City of Lowell has a mask mandate for all of their public buildings right now.
Right, but we will have more information. In a month or so into school on it is um. It is the the schools that don't require masks have no different rate, or if they do.
Well, I don't really wanna take a chance, I don't wanna take that chance to wait to see if the rates change.
Suggesting that we go with the mask.
Yes.
Oh, I, yeah.
And then every month evaluate.
Yeah, I agree, I think I just proposed that to the.
That's right, but we'll have more information. Every month.
What's gonna happen, people are gonna start coming indoors again, right now, everyone's kinda out and about. But everyone's gonna start being confined indoors as the weather starts to cool off and that may accelerate.
You also have flu and cold season coming.
Which I didn't get the flu or cold last year.
Mister Chairman, I think we should, I, you know, everybody has spoken, and again, I respect everybody's opinions, but maybe we should just vote on this if somebody wants to make a motion.
Well, you need a motion and then. Well, I'd like to make a motion and I expect to go uh possibly win, but I'd like to make a motion that teacher, that students have to wear masks. And teachers, if they are vaccinated, do not have to wear masks to teach in the classroom.
I can't agree with that.
That's fine, all I need is a second, all I need is a second.
Uh how do we wanna procedurally do this in the sense that are we going to vote on the policy first? And then clarify. Based on your, you break it down one level.
Well, I think we vote on that, we vote yes or no on that, because realistically, it's saying that the students will be wearing masks. Which is what the superintendent is proposing, she's actually proposing that everybody in the building wears masks.
Including visitors.
Yeah, I would suggest maybe we adopt.
But if I'm working on my own and I'm away from everybody, I don't have to have a face mask or.
In an isolate, yes.
Right, I'm just trying to say, I'm a teacher.
Yeah, I understand.
You're all wearing masks and I don't have to wear a mask.
You have the same vote that I do.
Ain't gonna happen.
I understand.
Here's what I'm going to suggest, and it's only a suggestion, is that we agree to, or the motion is to approve. The general health and safety practices and protocols with what a slight modification for your suggestion. With regards to teachers, if you're vaccinated, um you can.
Chairman, is there a second on that motion? I didn't hear one.
Nor did I.
I haven't heard a second either.
Does anybody wanna second that?
Motion dies for all.
Okay.
Point well taken. Alright, so then the motion is to adopt the general health and safety practices and protocols. As suggested by um our superintendent.
Did you wanna add the modification of the monthly?
Oh, we can and we can then add the modification that'd be reviewed by the committee on a monthly basis and make it a standard item. At each.
On the agenda.
On the agenda. Give a second that one?
Yep.
Mister Tatsias.
George, Tatsias. Alright, do you want any further discussion on that or a roll call?
Well, the governor could say something next week, maybe we might have to have something, let's get the kids back in school.
Alright, alright, and then I guess, how about a roll call then?
Last year, we wanted to get the kids.
Yes.
Mister Tatsias?
Yes.
Mister Warren?
Yes.
Mister Oviem?
Yes.
Mister Lamein?
Yes.
Mister Shan?
No.
Mister Gitcher?
No.
Mister Gigi?
Yes.
What's the last item on my agenda?
Now we invite the business manager.
Well, you're in the hot seat now.
Hopefully, this isn't as long as those last, that last one there, but.
Um, the first item on my agenda this evening is just an update on our FY twenty one and twenty two budgets. Um, just letting everyone know that we closed out the FY twenty one budget favorably. Um, we're very close to the the minimum of net school spending at this point, over the last two years, there've been savings and. Um, they're they're adding up at a at an alarming rate now, so we'll be talking more about um budgets come the September meeting. Um, at which time we'll also be discussing the FY twenty two budget again, because we will have to do. Uh a new budget for FY twenty two in the final stages of the state budget, they actually increased our chapter seventy funding a hundred and fifty one thousand dollars. Um, so we have a little bit more spending to do and get on the table, um and at that point, things should be pretty well set for. Um, health insurance projections, staffing, we'll know what was filled, what wasn't filled, what's gonna be a substitute, so we'll have a real clear look. Um, and at that point, we'll be able to put together a comprehensive budget to take us through the rest of the year. Hopefully, without much modification and everything stays on the course. Um, item two on my agenda tonight is a item that will require a vote for surplus equipment of the Chromebook carts. Um, so in the past, what happened here at Greater Little Tech was there was a Chromebook in um every classroom, if not. Virtually every classroom, um barring a handful, maybe throughout the building, and there were twenty four Chromebooks in each cart. Regardless of the class size, so AP physics with eighteen kids, there were still twenty four Chromebooks in the room. Um, because maybe the section after that was biology and there were twenty four kids in that class. Um, so we had a, I guess, what we'd call an an inefficiency in the fact that we probably had probably near three thousand plus Chromebooks and. Twenty two hundred students, so um when we moved to the one to one last year, we talked to the IT department, asked about. How much damage was going on, how many had to be replaced, what the outcome was of letting the students take the Chromebook and take ownership of them. Um, and it was reported that it wasn't any worse, if not, they would say it was probably better than in past years, because there was. Uh, ownership of the Chromebook and it wasn't one that you just pulled out of a cart, you popped the keys off and threw back in there. Cause you didn't care if it worked ten minutes from after you left the room. Um, so with that said, we now have Chromebook carts all over the place, because we've moved to this one to one model. Um, we have sixty plus Chromebook carts that are still serviceable, still usable. Um, and we've reached out to our surrounding communities just to see if there was interest, if they had plans to purchase them this year themselves anyway. Um, and I believe all sixty would be spoken for if it was to be voted as a surplus item. Um, by our sending communities, um everyone was still on the classroom cart. Um, method, especially at the elementary and lower grades that we don't have, um because. Carting something back and forth for a kindergartner isn't very effective, um so we're looking for a vote to. Declare the sixty Chrome, sixty plus Chromebook cart surplus, um and then go through the school committee policy for disposal, which will include. Working with our member communities initially.
Second, little discussion.
You would like a discussion?
Yeah, if. Do you issue a a Chromebook to each student? And what happens if something happens to that Chromebook?
We we gotta self insure, um so our IT department has a couple of skilled techs that um we've had. You know, last year, there were still issues, you know, I would bet we probably took and serviced a hundred Chromebooks last year. You know, a screen gets broken, keys get bopped off, things happen, um but for the most part, what we found last year was uh fixable items. So they can order the screens right from Amazon, they're about twenty twenty five bucks, uh so a kid comes in, drops off. X Y Z happened, um they fixed it, returned to the student, and then they continued on. Um, I can only think of one or two cases where um. Things either weren't repairable or sometimes the Chromebooks, you know, they usually last four or five years. Sometimes in that last year, they're limping, um so there were only a handful of times, I think last year, speaking with the IT department that. They couldn't repair them and get them back out, but um luckily, we ordered six hundred roughly per year. With incoming classes of five hundred and fifty, five seventy, um so that leaves us, you know, fifty sort of flux. And then we keep some for uh MCAS testing and such in case students didn't bring theirs or. Um, this year, we're actually taking a handful of the carts and loading them up with some of this excess. Um, in in the case that students show up without them in the day and they need it, they can go down to the cluster and the cluster will have a cart. So instead of every classroom, there'll be, you know, twenty backup per cluster maybe.
So we do have some extra carts in the the building then?
Yep, yep, we would do and we're gonna retain the the newest ones, um unfortunately, most of these have been purchased within the last five to ten years, so. Um, they're serviceable, they've got life in them and they'll, you know, I think.
Is it something we're gonna need again?
Uh, I don't believe so.
Now we need some now, you know.
I mean, it's it's very, it's possible that we could go back, um talking with, talking with the IT IS department, um I think. That things have worked out as good, if not better than anticipated with issuing a Chromebook to every student, so. Um, I think so long as the attitude or or something doesn't change to. Force us back to retaining control of the devices and only using them during school hours, then I think we we're in a safe spot to say that. It's not likely that we'll need these.
This is probably a dumb question, IT's all set with doing this, I take it.
Yep.
Okay. So but so what you're proposing will still have spares and okay.
Absolutely.
I'll I'll second the motion.
You have a motion seconded by Mister Gitcher?
Uh, any further discussion? Roll call then?
Mister Bagu?
Yes.
Mister Tatsias?
Yes.
Mister Morris?
Yeah.
Mister Oviem?
Yes.
Mister Lamein?
Yes.
Mister Shan?
Yes.
Mister Gitcher?
Yes.
Mister Gigi?
Yes.
Alright, in my final item, I have an update on the FOB system that we're implementing. Um, so I actually have the clock, the physical clocks in the building now, I have one running in my office, we have the software. Um, integration is still working through, um you know, it's not perfect. Um, not everyone runs payroll the same way, not every timekeeping system integrates with payroll the same way, so. Um, we're still working through some of the custom build, but I believe we're, at this point, I can say we're on track to have the clocks mounted. Ready for when staff comes back into the building to be able to FOB, we're gonna do sort of a a live test, is what I would call it. Um, from that day one, in which case, we're gonna have to maintain the the time cards. That they're currently using, or their time sheets that they're currently using as a verification process against the FOBbing. Um, so I anticipate we'll probably be doing that for a month, making sure there aren't any, you know. Outside scenarios that we didn't see coming or um, you know, just general glitches. Uh, I mean, the worst possible scenario would be we would jump on the FOB and then, you know, someone doesn't get paid, gets overpaid, gets underpaid. Whatever the case may be, um so by utilizing both and using them as a verification process against each other through the first month of school, I think. You know, we'll work out all those issues and by, um you know, I'm thinking by early October, we'll be full scannable and full ready and. Uh, things will be up and operational.
So then it can come off all business in three months. I'm sure.
Two months.
Two months.
Mike, I'm sure.
By the October meeting, I'll have it off.
I'm sure your hands are gonna be full, because you're gonna be double checking, so I'll tell payroll, I said, thank you.
Yeah.
It's gonna be, it's gonna be tough in the beginning.
I I gotta be honest, I haven't done much here, uh payroll's really taken this one and run with it, and the payroll administrator and Brittany, the senior accounting clerk slash payroll. Um, the two of them have done phenomenal job, they've taken ownership, they've really driven the process and um I think we've had some. You know, there were there were hiccups, but by no means was it, you know, plug and play. Um, but I think we've had a a strong team working hard and I know that they're committed to the process and making sure it works. If for no other reason, they're not getting.
Are you saying, so I have.
So that'll, right now, we're working out some of that in the first month. Um, right now, your your punch will be restricted after the fifteen minute mark, so if you show up at seven sixteen, you can't even punch. You you gotta run into your shift and then call your supervisor later to add a punch, or to call payroll and say, I was sixteen minutes late, add the punch back for me. Um, there's also rounding rules, which we haven't implemented yet, um I haven't come up with. So this this was one of the, one of the more challenging conversations in the process was, you know, what's an appropriate rounding rule versus. A a punch window, so if you restrict the window to fifteen minutes, you can then then have a rounding rule at seven and a half, so if. You know, you're seven and a half minutes early, it rounds you up and you lose seven and a half minutes, if you're, you know, eight minutes early. It's gonna round you back and you're gonna get, you know, fifteen minutes potentially if you're paid on an hourly basis. Uh, for the most part, we don't have people that are. Hard set hourly, there's security, I think, is the only one that's hard set hourly, everyone else has a contract negotiated on a weekly rate. Or a daily rate or a salaried rate, so we won't run into much of that, um. But, you know, that's where.
The whole concept was to keep people honest.
Yeah, oh, absolutely.
As opposed to I come in at seven twenty every day or I leave early every day.
Yeah, oh, yeah, no, and and that stuff will all come out, so another uh feature and benefit is that not only. Will will it round, but it also keeps track of the actual time.
Will it, will it be an actual FOB or will it be on your ID?
It's it's actually just the IDs that we already all have, um yourselves included, I believe, uh if you get a number at the bottom, that's actually your. For you guys, it's not an employee number, but that's your identification number, so I'm two four nine three. Um, so I can punch as two four nine three or swipe my card over the top and it will know it's me either way. Um, it also tracks how did I log myself in today, was I coming through automotive today, was I coming through the sports pavilion? Tells us which location you came through, it'll tell you, um.
That's good to know.
They can do it on the computer too, so if you are running late and you wanna make sure you're into your classroom and it's. Seven, seven twenty, you gotta be in the classroom at seven twenty five, you can run through the building, get to your room. Pull up your computer and hit the time clock straight from your computer as well, um so I think there's um some flexibilities and. And benefits to the process, um as well as.
You running into challenges or you're just trying to sort this all out right now?
Um, sorting it out, sorting it out more than more than challenges, I think.
You work the kinks as they appear.
Yeah, I think, um, you know, there were some, there was some issue on the on one of our last implementation calls that we would challenge in the fact that. It's it's kinda funny, we track certain things hourly or or by half day, quarter day, whole day. Um, but other things hourly, and and there was a a bit of a conversion issue between the two pieces of software. Cause effectively, it's, you know, the timekeeping software or clock software, and then our payroll software independently. But being integrated together and 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 in that process, we found that. Some of that conversion from things that we keep on a daily basis versus an hourly basis, weren't matching up a hundred percent. Um, we're gonna be working again on that on the twenty seventh, which is next. Thursday, Friday, something like that, and the thirty first to make sure it's all worked out beforehand, but um. As as of now, it looks like we'll be all set, I think we figured out what.
You convey that to a seven.
Yeah, September, I'll give you another update and how we're how we're rolling with it.
Great question, so you have how many clocks?
We got six physical clocks.
And they actually have to be at an an entrance or an exit?
I've put them all at entrances and exits on the first floor, just for ease purposes, I don't think there's a way you could get into the building. Near a parking spot that you won't have to pass at least one.
Alright, so at some point, is the goal to kind of expand that to all our entrances, so we know who's in the building, who's not in the building?
Um, we could. Yeah, I mean, the clocks are relatively inexpensive, I think they were twenty two hundred bucks a piece, um and then all it needs is a. Cat five cable and we've got the network capability, so I mean, we could put them everywhere, uh it's just a matter of wall space and running cable.
Okay, thanks, good job.
So does it also, you are in the building, now you leave the building?
Yep.
You swipe to leave the building?
Yep, swiping on the way out, yep.
Okay.
And and there's a a report function that we'll have available for security, that the who's in the building is the report. Um, so at at any point, they could do a live feed, pull it up and find out, you know, it's it's ten thirty and. No one set off a camera for six hours, but Mike still says he's here, come down, check on me, see if I'm actually there. Um, or if I just missed my punch on the way out, one way or the other.
But you have a mechanism to go by to.
Yep.
Check on someone.
Yeah, and one of the, one of the nice features was that it reminds you in the morning after, like if I went to punch in the next day and I never punched out the night before. It'll give you the physical reminder on the clock and say, what time did you leave last night, basically? Um, and at which point you can put in your time and it'll it'll still alert the supervisor that this was a manual punch because there was a miss. So they can track that stuff as well, so that uh if there's a habit of me missing every Friday punch. Um, and logging it on Monday, it'll be it'll be pretty apparent quick.
Terrific.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, sir. Any old business? That I address, any new business that takes us on to uh Mister Gitcher's um motion? Or discussion regarding increasing the substitute rates? So I'll let Lee speak to that.
So I guess what I'm looking for is to uh up the up the substitute teachers rate. Um, the reason I'm making it, obviously, uh last year. Um, the reason I'm making it, obviously, uh, last year, we had problems getting substitute teachers when we were using cluster chairs and administrators in the, uh. Classroom, and I think it'd be more attractive to get, uh, licensed teachers or retired teachers to come in if we up the rate. Uh, to prevent the cluster chairs and the administrators in the classroom. Jill, I know you love being on the classroom, but you were in the classroom last year too and, um. It's just one of those things where I, I think it'd be more attractive if we up the, the substitute teachers rate to get ahead. Of I'm looking down at the city of Lowell or Lowell Community Charter, New Bedford. If we can just, you know, Essex North Shore, if we can bump the rate up to make it more lucrative to get. You know, we might get retired teachers and I know like Muse Paul, you're tapped out of the, you can only make so much, maybe he walks in one or two days a week. Not Paul, but a retired teacher walks in one or two days a week, which will keep the cluster chairs and the administrators out of the classroom. And I guess that's my goal because we're really not, if the cluster chair's in the classroom, he's not doing his job or, or her job and we should be doing it. And then they're staying later and I, again, I just don't wanna burn out anybody that.
See, I can really appreciate this forward-thinking to try to fix a problem that we have here. It's my understanding that we have some issues getting substitute teachers, and because of that being a difficult problem. Some of the administrators and so forth have had to fill in in the classrooms, and I, I gotta give Mister Getchner a lot of credit here for this forward-thinking. And, uh, like to have some further input from the committee men.
I'm on board with, uh, Mister Getcha.
Okay. Anybody else? Yeah, we gotta come up with a number.
Well, I, I didn't, I didn't wanna put rates down there because I, I, you know, obviously. That's gonna come down to us here at the committee and I didn't wanna throw that on the motion right off the bat because we're, we're still.
We have other issues.
We have other issues, uh, to address, so I, I was gonna kinda bounce it back to the superintendent and.
Look for a report or recommendation.
Yeah, I'll see if you, yeah, I know you gave us this and I, and I know, I just wanna see what you're comfortable with.
So I, just to, to, currently, I guess we'll start with the non-degree, uh, in, individuals. Currently, that rate is ninety dollars, uh, the individuals with bachelors are, is a hundred. And a licensed teacher is, or retired teacher is a hundred and five.
Is there any segregation for a master's degree, uh, just the bachelor's is it and then a licensed teacher?
Yep, bachelor's, uh, and then a licensed teacher.
I, I mean, I guess I'm comfortable with the licensed teacher to bring it up to one thirty-five, the way Lowell Community Charter is.
It's bachelor's plus, I should say.
Ba, uh, is that the same thing, Jill, the bachelor's, so the bachelor's at Lowell Communities at one twenty? Their retired teacher, licensed teachers at one thirty-five, and I'd like to match that, and that, that'll put us right with Lowell Community Charter.
Well, I'd like to see what the superintendent may suggest.
So the licensed teacher going competitively. It's, it's a big jump from one oh five to one.
Yeah, it, it is, and, and I had talked to Mike Knight about this and we can use some of that to, to offset that. It'd be the recovery money that we have due to, due to COVID, because that could be possible why we. These, the, the teachers not coming in, so it really wouldn't come out of the budget, it would come out of the recovery money.
Cause we had a lot of valves.
So. So what are you recommending for, like, I would recommend a?
I like the idea to match the charter school because to me, they are, they don't have enough staff. A lot of the time, they're always trying to hire new staff and stuff like that, so I think that's why they make it lucrative. To have a substitute at a higher pay rate so that they can have people in their classrooms.
So you're talking about for the licensed retired teacher?
Yes.
At one thirty-five?
Yeah, one thirty-five because that, that, and the reason I'm saying that is that they're, they're retired, they're licensed.
And then what would you say for the bachelor's plus, one twenty?
Whatever you're comfortable with.
I would defer to the superintendent.
Yeah, and that's whatever you're comfortable with.
That issue, knowing that we wanna be competitive and maybe slightly better.
That's correct.
But we have equities within the school that we have to.
Consider.
Be consider.
So you wanna just leave your motion standing?
Maybe one oh five, one oh five for non-degree, one twenty for. Bachelor's plus and one thirty-five for a licensed teacher.
Perfect. Are you comfortable with that?
Yes, I'd like to get some. Can we bring the assistant superintendent and principal up here and ask him?
Thumbs up, uh, Mister Bahu. Just my input?
Yes.
Um, elated, anything we can do to get more subs in the building, I fully support and I appreciate the motion. Um, literally, uh, as you pointed out, the cluster chairs, as well as the directors, everybody. Literally, everybody in, in the building last year, uh, and the leadership team went above and beyond. I was so happy and elated that they were helpful and so cooperative, so I think, uh. What you're doing is a great, um, expression of appreciation, so I support it fully.
Doing a school a good service.
We, we know, we have great staff and I know that everybody went above and beyond, so I, I just think by doing this. So I guess I'll make the motion for the retired teacher, uh, licensed, one thirty-five, the bachelor's plus one twenty. And the, uh, non-degree one oh five.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please. Yes.
Mister Tatsias?
Yes.
Mister Warren?
Yes.
Mister O'Gier?
Yes.
Mister Lemay?
Yes.
Mister Shan?
Yes.
Mister Getchian?
Yes.
Mister Gigi?
Yes. Thank you.
Elite, thanks for the forward-thinking. Any reports of subcommittees? Not aware of any. At this time, we need a motion to enter executive session pursuant to Mass General Laws. Chapter thirty-eight, section twenty-one, eighty-two, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations. With non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with the following non-union personnel. Non-union personnel. Will any, will any votes be taken in open session? So we might have, so we might have to come back, uh, we would need votes on ratification of any contracts discussed will be taken in open session afterwards. Alright, so do I have a motion to move to executive session? Second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mister Bahu?
Yes.
Mister Tatsias?
Yes.
Mister Warren?
Yes.
Mister O'Gier?
Yes.
Mister Lemay?
Yes.
Mister Shan?
Yes.
Mister Getchian?
Yes.
Mister Gigi?
Yes.
Five-minute break, Mister Chairman?
Back in open session, may I have a motion to adjourn? A second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mister Bahu?
Yep.
Mister Tatsias?
Yes.
Mister Warren?
Yes.
Mister O'Gier?
Yes.
Mister Lemay?
Yes.
Mister Getchian?
Yes.
Mister Shan?
Yes.
Mister Gigi?
Yes.
So I hate to.
No, we're still on.
Thanks, everybody.
Still on.
Thank you.